All right, welcome everybody. The town board work session of July 30th, two thousand nineteen. Welcome RJ.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And oh, you're welcome.
So RJ is here to talk about our um property casualty insurance coverage renewal which is up on August thirty first.
Yes.
So um what the board has in front of them is a side by side comparison of our current coverage and the proposed coverage for next year through Zurich. Um it's. RJ, one more question.
Excellent.
The short version, one version?
Good, I'll do this, I'll do the short and then if you need more, I'll do long.
Shorter version.
Um currently the uh town of Newcastle is insured with um Allied World, it's an A plus rated company. It's protected by New York State and there's no chance of accessibility by the insurance company. Um back three months ago, as insurance companies tend to do, Allied World said listen, for all of our municipalities, our policyholders were not going to renew them. As they come up, we're just going to leave the industry. It's not profitable for us. Insurance companies do it all the time, where everything needs money. So what I did was I'm in contact with uh George Burrow, I went ahead and marketed the account to multiple insurance companies with the same qualifications. They had to be AA plus rated, they had to be protected by New York State, protected meaning if the insurance company went bankrupt, New York State would come in and pay your claims. Um and lastly, there can't be any risk to the town of Newcastle for word assessment. Some insurance, reciprocals will, after paying a premium, has the ability of now assessing you on top of that. So those are the three things immediately I said are the qualifications. Um we went to four insurance companies, Houston Casualty, Travelers, Argonauts, and Zurich Insurance Company, Jimmy, Rat, and I, some were all, all four met qualifications. Um that I had, um Zurich was the most aggressive insurance company, um Zurich's been around for a hundred plus years. Um using the same deductibles as the town currently enjoys for each of the coverages. Um I was able to negotiate uh the premium within point oh oh one of what you're currently paying. Um.
Great.
So um with that, and the current marketplace for municipalities, normally the insurance companies are asking for a three to four percent rate increase. Um if you go through the process of marketing and saying I'm gonna move it away, you're not going to get it, you can get it back to very close to the, as per expiry. Um what else can I tell you? So the package policy, uh I'll stay with the short version. Uh has multiple coverages, property, boiler machinery, police professional insurance, public officials, employer practices insurance, uh boiling and machinery. All goes in the package policy along with the umbrella policy. Um and what else can I tell you? Um any questions so far? One of the options we gave is the town currently has a ten million umbrella, has had a ten million umbrella as long as I've known. Um we've given quotes to potentially increase, um to go from ten to fifteen or fifteen to twenty. Um other municipalities have, uh just give you a benchmark, North Castle has ten million umbrella. Um Amerenick had twenty and went to fifteen umbrella, um Pelham had, Village of Pelham has fifteen, Citywide Plains has ten, Village of Bronxville had, oh sorry.
Is that it?
Those in charge of pricing, White Plains is ten.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, sometimes it's a matter of function and cost.
Pretty rough.
Yeah.
Uh how much is the budget and stuff like that, so um and also umbrellas sometimes is an inexact science. Uh when it comes to this table, we can tell almost to the penny how much would cost for a place. Liability, you know, how much could a liability claim be? Depending on the instance, could be a lot. Um so in, I would, I would agree with you, sometimes it is surprising that White Plains has only ten. Um.
Does it matter if they have like a pool? I would imagine if a town has a pool, I mean that that could, that could get it totally.
Yeah, it's, they have their own, they have their own separate limits.
Mm-hmm.
It's a, their own umbrella, uh separate umbrella.
No, have a pool.
For those facilities, oh that's interesting.
Separate pool. Yeah, no, it's not a part, they're not part of a.
Is that like a minkle dam?
Yes, so talk to us about the dam.
Um. Yes, um.
Do you want it?
Do I want it? At twenty, I went to look for it, couldn't find it, a couple days ago, I went to look for it, it's in the woods.
For a dollar.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um.
Okay, we'll forget about that before we talk about it.
Yeah.
Forget about the dam.
Very good, uh.
Why?
We talked about the characters.
Okay, no, I mean, I know it's not covered, but is there anything?
I mean, you kind of.
Yeah, no, nothing.
You get it, but I mean, there's difference here.
Right, so um yeah, so you want to talk about the difference in coverage? Sure.
Yeah.
Sure. Uh very good, uh if you go over, uh did a side by side in speaking with Jill, uh leading up, so this should really be helpful, we're changing insurance companies. Please do a side by side. Now again, the policies are normally three hundred fifty pages long, so I highlighted in three pages, this is the biggest side by side. Um and you'll see.
The slacker.
Thank you.
We really wanted the line by line, we'd only give us four pages.
So um so you'll see, among the biggest differences um in terms of pluses and and some tris- subtractions. Um the town now has more property coverage, uh you had eighty eight million covering all your buildings um uh and contents inside. It's now up to ninety million uh as, on a blanket limit, same deductibles. Um moving down to the second page, um at the bottom, town has two dams. Um and coverage continues to be covered in cases of slip and fall, so if there was um teenagers frolicking around, illegally going there, frolicking, that's an insurance term. Um and slips and falls will be covered. Um the, you like that?
I do.
Um.
I follow you.
Yes, so uh there's two dams, um and one of the dams, uh Upper Minkle, um has some items that uh need to be updated.
And we're studying it with the consultant away from the consultant.
Yes.
And at this point, it's determined that Minkle's not going to be uh covered.
Covered. And the insurance company was well aware, they said listen, if there's ever a time that they go ahead and um make any of the changes, we'd be quick to go, wait, the insurance company would be quick to go ahead and add it. So they think it's gonna be a mid-year thing also, wouldn't, wouldn't cost the town any money.
But frolicking in that dam is still covered?
Uh and insurance companies. Yes, frolicking, slip and fall, yeah.
Okay.
Um the um.
RJ, can I ask you about the Article seventy eight coverage?
On me?
Yes, um Article seventy eight is really non-monetary claims, so typically we think of as insurance is, if there's a liability lawsuit, the town gets named in a lawsuit and they're looking for money. That's the typical lawsuits cover. On occasion, there's the, a lawsuit for someone that comes in and the claimant's not looking for money. They're looking for a change to be made. So um yeah, there was a municipality that um, there was a application for a developer that was denied. Uh for good reason, actually happened to be a, a resident wanted to build a um pigeon house, and it was against code to build a pigeon house. Board said, no, it's not approved, the resident was unhappy, and sued, not for money, but they wanted to have their application approved. So um for many years, um the town never had non-monetary coverage. Um so up until about three years ago, we were able to put in force non-monetary coverage. Um the current part of the coverage you have now is uh fifty thousand dollars for each claim, and I think it is kind of defense cost to pay for a lawyer. Because in essence, the claimant's not looking for money, so it's, the town has to pay defense cost.
Where, where is the Article seventy eight?
Sure, I love.
So it's called non-monetary defense.
Non-monetary, it's on the second page, um.
Public officials, see?
Yeah.
Public officials.
Um so the ti- the town uh went from uh before.
So twenty five thousand is the aggregate.
Yes, yes.
All right.
So Jill just needs to know that for the budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's exactly right.
Um.
Yeah, so just, so and is there any way for us to increase that, is there any?
Oh, that's the maximum, I asked for it.
Maximum, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
They actually offer less, each insurance company, um some insurance companies, like Travelers, don't offer it at all.
Yeah, it, it was unusual.
It is unusual.
Yeah, um.
It is unusual, because you're almost guaranteed to use it.
Yeah.
Right. Uh it is, and also some insurance companies say, if you're not getting sued for money, where's your lawyer? So um that's how some in- insurance companies.
So it's in essence, you're paying for defense costs.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Right.
For claims they know that's going to come in.
Yep.
Uh so um last pa- last page uh is the premium summary. Um again, the uh the town is currently paying for the pack, the umbrella, three hundred ninety six thousand oh ninety. Um I was able to find Zurich and negotiate, three hundred ninety six thousand six forty six.
Good job.
Uh which is point oh oh one of what you're currently paying.
And you're comfortable with these guys?
Yes, yeah, the policy, there's specialized municipalities, um they meet all my criteria, um I feel very comfortable having them as an insurance company.
And I will say, having claims against them, they're a good carrier, they resolve cases.
Yeah.
You know, some carriers don't resolve it, and then they drag it, you know, then the defense attorneys make a ton of money, which drives up your insurance costs. And uh it's not good for anybody, but if you have the defense attorneys.
Yeah. Absolutely.
So there are a couple of ancillaries, I think I'm gonna leave them to the thirteenth and let the board look at them and.
Excellent.
Okay, and if we have any questions, we will let you know. RJ, thank you so much.
Excellent.
Thanks, RJ.
Sure, so um the ancillaries leave alone and go, uh what should I do with this?
This one just hold, hold on to.
The pack, no, but the package should, no, we're doing that.
That's the.
Oh, and and how much more was the uh fifteenth? Right, was that a point? No, did I miss something?
Uh no, I was seeing if the town would vote on the proposal.
Yes, this is, yeah, this we're going to approve tonight.
Oh, excellent, excellent, okay.
Yes, yes, this, this will be.
Okay, and then the ancillaries I can catch up with, and that's gonna be, yeah, that's the smallest part, actually.
Yes. Yeah, okay.
You can add those off.
Yes.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good, RJ.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, RJ.
Thank you. Okay, amendments to the parking section.
Should go out of order to people?
Yeah, it's quite a ways, a good idea, so let's just do the uh.
Yeah.
The proposal, the leaf blow legislation. So this is just a work session, so we're gonna ask, you know, no, no public comment. We do allow public comment in work sessions, but for this one, we just wanted an opportunity, as you know from the last meeting, just for the town board to discuss it amongst ourselves. Plus, the SAB wasn't able to make it tonight, so they actually asked us to adjourn it, but they didn't really give us much notice, and I didn't really want to, we didn't want to adjourn it without giving people notice who may show up. So we'll, we'll just do a discussion, we'll try to keep it brief, and then, because they said they do have additional information to give us.
Okay, great.
So um they really didn't want us to decide anything, opposing the fact that they feel the information they have is going to change the.
Yeah, but um, I'm sorry, Ike's comments, they should be in there.
I saw an email that actually, I'm making it.
Yeah, he sent it late.
Can you tell me what page?
Eighty five is one.
I don't think it's in here.
Well, I could, I could summarize Ike's comments if you guys wanted to.
Oh, here it is.
Is it in there?
We're not really.
Yeah, yeah, eighty nine. Page eighty nine you said?
Yeah, thanks.
They're spiritual.
Which you know?
Yeah, you just basically learn that um.
Course.
No.
And and effectiveness of their.
One room drill?
Well, spreadsheet was crossed.
That's what it's discussed, but it doesn't.
Yeah, the spreadsheet was crossed, was it not?
It's not, it's common.
It was a DVA.
No, it borrowed.
I know.
No, it was the inventory, yeah, I don't know.
I don't have, they, do you have that, it sells spreadsheet that you attached?
Um yeah, it's here, the, the thing is, is it was Ike's comments were in color, so I just didn't see them, it's fine.
And his letter, he does mention course.
Yeah, okay, okay. So um.
It was spreadsheet, not in.
Right, so um on page, uh starting on page ninety one. Um Ike kept putting some comments um just about uh regarding the seasonal limitations of of motorized leaf blowers. He just wanted the board to be aware um that one of the restrictions was Monday through Friday, eight AM to eight PM. Our staff begin their day at seven AM, and we do try very hard to do cleanup when people aren't around.
Mm-hmm, but our staff is currently violating our noise ordinance because according to our climate noise ordinance, we're not allowed to turn.
Well, we're exempt.
We're exempt?
Yeah, municipal operations are exempt from it. Um we, we, we could be um, you know, uh in town and sweeping or blowing. Um when people are sitting outside at Susan Lawrence, obviously, we don't want to do that, we, we try to do our street sweeping, we try to do our street cleaning when there are no cars around, when people aren't parked, when there aren't people walking around.
Right. Yeah.
Um so that clearly would, you know, is affecting, um also, just cleaning the bush and being able to prune in the train stations, we try to do it before the commuters come in.
Oh, is, is this Ike's?
Yes, that's Ike's.
You see, the second.
This is.
This is Ike's.
I, I.
Okay.
So we want to finish.
The pro- the problem, the problem is, let me see, the problem is, is that with this printout, you can't really tell which comments are his on the draft line.
Right, right, sorry, um so do we just wanna take in?
It's um, it's not, you know. I could summarize some of the things.
No, I mean, it's, it's, it's right here, so it's to A and B, the commentary after.
It was E.
Park staff works from six AM to two PM, Sundays and Sundays from the first weekend in April through the end of September. Although it's mainly field work, we want to make sure that the board's aware that it may have an effect on work schedule, typically Sundays is when we work in the train station lots. And again, they try to do it early, as early in the morning as possible. Um we, especially when there are, there are games on the fields, they try to get out there early in the morning before, you know, the start of eight or nine o'clock games to be, you know, mowing and cleaning.
Yeah, of course.
So that's fine. One of the ways we could deal with it if we wanted to is basically uh, is just having these restrictions apply to residential uh properties, properties owned for residential, which is what I suggested. Instead of getting rid of the exemption, and we get rid of the exemptions, and we have the, the seasonal ban as well as these time ban, the time limits only apply to the residential districts. That way, you know, this, the town will be able to continue doing what it's doing, as, as will the school, because I know Christine had an issue with that too, they try to do stuff before school starts.
Right.
And um.
It's, it's almost, I, I don't want to use the term comical, because it's not appropriate, but we're going, the issue that I've had, and I think Lisa's had this too, maybe I'm wrong, I'm misstating it. That the smaller lots are going to bear the burden.
Yes.
And the bigger lots are gonna get a pass, and the commercial lot, or the school lot, or the business lot, which may be really large and is regularly done. And doing more environmental noise and other damage is getting a pass. This legislation seems like it's fallen off the proverbial rails, and I don't even know what it is anymore. I think we all have the right intention, I think everyone has this right intention, whether you're, whether you're a commercial landscaper, homeowner, or the town board. I, I think, I think for the most part, our principles are in the same pay and place, but there's so many different competing ideas and how this is going to work, and how it's going to be fair and reasoned, and how it's going to actually do what we want it to do. It, it's almost we're on, like on this hamster wheel going up, we're not getting anywhere.
That's what I think, I think nobody disagrees that we want to protect the environment and protect kids and protect noise and all that, but to exempt anything over ten acres, to me, just is really putting the burden on residents who have smaller lots.
The fact of the matter is, anybody who's over ten acres cannot use this lightweight equipment in order to do a basic job.
But they're not really clearing all ten acres anyway.
Call it, call it six, call it whatever it is.
But whatever it may be, the principle, the point, I think, yes, we're, we're.
I understand the principle, but I also think that um there was a memo sent by Nick, which actually, I think it was by you, about how we, the EPA basically is jurisdiction.
Right, right, some of those we were discussing.
And that really, our concerns are primarily noise.
Yeah.
Right, and we're discussing it in executive session, some of my legal advice on that and other topics that I had, that I wanted to discuss with you, because we've not discussed in the executive session some of the legal issues.
Yeah.
I think this is an exact session conversation.
But we have a variety of concerns that are being addressed through this legislation, both environmental concerns and noise as well.
Right. So we can do that in executive, but my view is, if somebody is fortunate enough to have the money to be able to have a ten acre or more property, I'm talking about residential now. I just hate to exempt them and not anybody else.
So what about we?
It just doesn't feel right.
And.
But, but, you know, but to, to this point, you know, and I do think this becomes an executive session conversation, so I don't want to go too far down into this, but the fact of the matter is that, my feeling is, we have to get clear what our legislative intent is here. Because I feel like I'm not quite clear what we're trying to solve for at this time.
Well, first of all, let me just say this, I, I agree, but if we focus, there, there is rationale to focus only on the residential properties. And if we only focus on the residential properties, you get rid of all the exemptions, you don't need any exemptions whatsoever, which some people legitimately had concerns about, and will also protect them.
Painting, they still have it for painting.
Yeah, of course, but you, you, you're basically, you, you, that's, but you know, you're still dealing with the, the, the noise, which is a quality life issue, which is a hundred percent something we should be focused on. And the hours that people are blowing, you know, like on the weekends and at certain times, and also you're dealing with the particles that are thrown up, and the allergens, and on the mold, and all the other stuff, which is very relevant for the residential areas. Now, people say, well, then why aren't you legislating schools? Listen, if the schools could do that on their own, if they're concerned about their students, then they could, they could take that own action. You know, so personally, I think if they're limited to residential, we avoid a lot of the controversy, the ten acre controversy, the exemption controversy, and, 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 you know, we don't have to worry about the town with the hours.
I don't know, but then we're balancing, like we came at the streams the other day, and watching them.
And we can't follow our own beliefs.
We feel so strongly about it.
Blow the parking lot when nobody's even there.
Well, we would.
Why they needed to blow the parking lot, I don't know, but to me, that should be regulated, and frankly, our lot at Geddy Field, does every piece of grass really can't be in a parking lot? I, I, I just, I don't, it doesn't feel right to me, if, if we have a, an intent to eliminate, you know, noise pollution and other things that we're allowed to legislate for. I, I just don't think, why should one person be exempted and someone not, it's, it's an issue for everyone.
The, the term that gets thrown around is, what's good for the goose is good for the gander, and one, one piece of it, and the other piece is, if you really want to protect against the noise, the noise issue, and whatever else we can legislate to, and, and even if it's not direct, if there's other benefits, as you mentioned, with like mold and other debris. Then to Lisa's point, we should be on top of why a parking lot that's larger than, you know, that gets mowed around it every week in the summer, that's enormous, why is that not in, why is that not excluded?
Well, and note of nothing, I saw town, town staff blowing the dirt around on Red Field, and, and, you know, it feels like, feels like we need to be leading.
Yes, I, I think, I think it's.
And, and, and.
Well, I just want to make sure I'm clear.
Right, and I, you know, that's, that's the way it's been, but we have to change our.
But we're not totally.
Can you clarify something in this for me, make sure that I'm reading the legislation correctly, because I may not be. I see three categories of leaf blowers. Category one is the electric leaf blower, battery operated basically, or electric core.
Right. Yep.
Category two is the fuel powered, which is the standard homeowner model that they carry in their hands, got a little gas tank on it, and they go around. And the third one is the backpack model.
No, this is, the second is.
No.
Fuel powered is gas.
Those both are.
Why would, why would?
No, then they have the motorized leaf blower.
Then we have motorized leaf blower. Now, the, the, why would be a push blower?
So. That's like the big.
That's the big push, 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 push.
It says, if it's between fuel powered and motorized. Include any portable handheld or backpack style device that is powered by electricity, gasoline, diesel, or similar fuel engine, which is used to produce a stream of air from the privilege of blowing, moving, or distributing leaves, grass clippings, dust, dirt, trimmings from trees.
Right.
No, Paulo, they're all motorized leaf blowers, and there's two types of motorized leaf blowers, electric powered and fuel powered.
Well, if I'm reading this correctly, um. There is not a, that you can use the backpack blower, or not?
There's nothing to do with that.
No.
No.
So, but listen.
So can, can I say one quick thing? So I, what I don't have, we just, I just said I didn't like the exemptions for different types of property owners. But that being said, I would consider changing the allowable times from, and differentiating that between residents and commercials, because I think residents, you know, your next door neighbor is using a blower at seven o'clock in the morning. That's a big nuisance, but I understand that if, and I'm talking about, let's, even if it's an electric blower, but if the school, for instance, wants to make sure that they're doing whatever they need to do before the students get there, you know, there's a legitimate purpose for that.
Yeah, but a lot of schools' property staff, schools' property too.
Right, but there's a legitimate purpose, if we need, if the town needs to do something before all the commuters come into town, that makes sense to me from a first safety purposes or, you know, or real commercial purposes, that I kind of get.
Right, so it's about a safety reason, you know, a lot of those guys work in low speeds.
I mean, they don't want to blow anything around, even if it's with an electric blower, whatever we prove, they don't want to blow things around for kids because they're worried about.
When you talk about your grounds early over the summer.
You know, during the year, not so much over the summer, but for instance, I can understand why a school would say, I don't want to blow because I don't want allergens or pathogens or whatever it is, if there are kids around, I want to get that done before school starts. Or if we have to blow the field because the kids are going to be on it and it's not safe, whatever it is, I can understand for certain commercial purposes, being able to change the times of that.
But first of all, like.
Because they have to operate, as opposed to a, a resident who can, has maybe a larger time span where they can do that.
To borrow expression from Paulo, which I use a lot of time, it's like with Hello Kers, it's like we're, we're, we're searching for a problem, a solution to a problem that doesn't exist. We don't really get complaints about us blowing our fields early in the morning, or the school doesn't really get complaints about them blowing their fields in the morning. What we do get complaints is when somebody's out enjoying their property on a Sunday afternoon, uh you know, five o'clock, and somebody's blowing their, the neighbor's property, those are the complaints we actually get. So, you know, I, I don't think we really need to worry about, you know, the hours for schools or towns or commercial properties, because we just don't hear about those complaints. And by the way, with this legislation, the, the, the DBA settings that we pick would apply to everybody, including the schools and the towns, so we would, what's good, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. We would be requiring, if we say seventy two or seventy five, the town equipment and the school equipment has to comply with that. We would just be saying that the hours and limitations don't apply to you, and you're not required to use a gas powered mower, blower in, in the off season. But if you're gonna use a gas, an electric, I'm sorry, electric, but if you're gonna use a gas powered one, twelve months end of the year, it has to be a certain DBA level. So it's a, it's a year round solution for better, for more environmentally friendly equipment.
Well, we, they don't have to be hugely exclusive.
Then could you bring a paragraph E two, two A, E two A B C for me?
Yep.
And can you please tell me what that actually means?
Right, so I'll read it, during the period, it's June first, through and including September thirtieth of each year, the use of all motorized leaf blowers is permitted as follows, so from June through September thirtieth, Monday from Fridays, eight AM to eight PM.
Correct, which is why I'm talking about the third category. So if we look at the definition, so there's electric, there's fuel, and there's motorized. I was assuming that that motorized in E two was referring up to the motorized definition above. Is that correct?
It's meant to include, as I understand, it's meant to include fuel powered as well.
Correct.
Which is, does say fuel powered motorized leaf blower.
Correct.
So the definition is meant to capture both motorized and fuel mo- powered motorized.
But it's basically saying that it's permitted.
This, this, you know, Ike, Ike made comments on this.
Yeah, you're right.
I mean, I'm sorry to be like.
You're right. No, I think, yeah, I think something got lost when we shortened it.
And I also.
Right, that's not the intent.
Right, and I would also really like to hear from Ike, so when Ike's note to us included in the spreadsheet, he has some very interesting, um, I'm gonna put qualifiers, sort of a footnote, or sort of in the heading, he's got qualifiers, like the runtime, eleven minutes for certain of the equipment that are specking. What he's not including in here, which I would also like to hear from him, is I would really like to hear from him what he thinks the impact would be to, because you know, his concern really is, is he's finally got his operation working the way that he likes it to work. And he, you know, Ike is pretty picky, so when he's happy, I'm happy. And he's, his concern is um that this is really going to either increase the number of hours that's gonna, to meet his high standards. Or we're going to have to make sacrifices, so I would really like Ike to put a little more flesh on this memo, and I know he sent it.
Yep.
Today.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's, it is camp, so it's just, it's.
No reason to apologize. But what if, what if?
Well, no, but, but on, but on the other hand, I mean, it is camp, but we've been discussing this for eighteen months, so you want to get this at five o'clock, when we're having our ultimate meeting about this, it's just, it's, it's, it's frustrating.
Right, right. I appreciate that, but in all fairness.
And it's also frustrating, I feel like, the fact that we just took this over, right, we had contracted this out until last year, and so the fact that we just took it over, and yet we've instituted policies that do not comply with what we're trying to legislate.
Well, we didn't institute a policy.
With all fairness, we tried to, these things had been, no, 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 be.
For practices, we've been.
These are leaf blowers, I don't know.
Because mowers are mowers, we, we didn't go with an electric mower, it's not feasible for it, no, 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 no.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't at the time, so.
But yeah, so what he did do, however, was.
We're not talking about.
I'm not, I'm not talking about the mowers, I'm saying why, why did we purchase this, this?
Because we, some of the things we had, so some of this equipment we had, some of the equipment we didn't have with it, um.
He's talking about what he would have to repurchase to replace ours.
Here. Would, when he took and he bought the weed whackers that we purchased for the new mowing equipment.
Right.
That's not included.
So we got rid of the, the four stroke, although they run clean, or they overheat after prolonged use, which basically means they completely blow out and they're unusable.
Right. Right.
But now it's regulated, yes.
Right.
I appreciate that, but in the spirit of what Ivy just said, in knowing that there was legislation, anytime he was able to take and purchase something that would be greener, considered to be an industry standard or workable, he purchased it.
Right.
It ends up, it's a complete bust. Um he didn't go for the electric backpacks because this is not what we had, what we had approved, and it, it, it's not what it had been budgeted for the year before.
But we exempt them for it.
And although I appreciate the fact that we have been talking about it, this legislation's been around a very long time, and it, you know, it's had stutter starts, it didn't, you know.
Well, the, the fact is, it's, it's. Well, the the fact is that it's it's very expensive and stuff. The the, the one, the one point that Ike makes, which I think is very relevant is, it, he, when he goes, and he goes to Austining Mowers, he said, there's, there's only one brand that's at seventy-two DBA, and if you go to seventy-five, you're, you're, there's much, there's more options.
Right.
For the commercial blowers, and I think that's something we should consider. And and also I think something we should consider, we're not designing anything tonight, but I think something we should consider, just throw it out there, is is the push blowers. They, they definitely are more efficient. We've heard from landscapers, you heard from Vinnie, and they do the job much quicker. And and the the lowest one you can get for that one is eighty. And so if you're, if you're not gonna, if we're not gonna allow eighty for uh push blowers, then essentially we're banning push blowers. And that, that's something we should consider, because if we're gonna sit here and say seventy-five and expect people to get push blowers, it's not gonna happen, you know?
It happened in Austin.
Well, no, according to Vinnie, it didn't, so they may not be using push blowers. I mean, and also what Vinnie says, a lot of people aren't complying in Austin.
Yeah, pretty much. So I mean, that's the other point is.
Well, we shouldn't enact legislation that's gonna be, unless some people aren't gonna comply.
I agree, that's why I think we should raise it to eighty for the push blowers. And I think we should also raise it to seventy-five for the other ones, to give consumers the best, the most, the best option. By the way, the last revision, they even have numbers.
I actually think the largest component of this, because I, I do want to talk about the EPA comments in the executive session,
So it's. Hmm.
but I think Lisa brought up a really good point earlier, because I think a large component of this is the noise nuisance factor. And I take a look at this, and I think the hours can be even more restrictive than we have in here now.
Well, we, we talked about that last time, we're gonna make it more restrictive.
So I don't know what the ideas are, since you wanted to sort of throw it around. I don't know if you had any specific ideas about the hours. Well, I think we were, we were making it more restrictive on Sundays and we were making it more restrictive on Saturdays.
We didn't talk about Sunday.
Because we were talking about it, if you're having a, yeah, if you're having a barbecue to allow it until eight PM at night, it's crazy.
Yeah, like five o'clock on Saturdays.
So we were talking, I don't remember exactly what we said, Rand has notes from that.
I think five, I think we said five.
I think we said four or five.
And Sunday should be earlier, maybe we talk about no holidays maybe?
Right.
If people are home enjoying their yards, they shouldn't have to listen to leaf blower. I'm sorry if uh people want to use that time to do their lawn, but there's a quality of life issue.
I think we, yeah, I think we cut it back, it was like nine.
You're thinking four o'clock on Saturdays or five o'clock on Saturdays?
Wait, I'm sorry, um, so on page eighty-seven, it was, uh, Monday to Friday, we had changed it.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I think we had nine to.
Ike may have not have been working with the most.
Yeah, I know we've talked about that, but.
How big.
Yeah, yeah, the concern also is.
Monday through Friday, eight to five, Saturday nine to five, and Sunday nine to four, was the, is the latest version.
And the concern is you want to also make sure that the homeowner who has working, or working either.
Right, right.
During the week, sometimes, sure.
Sure. Either working or one is working and someone can't get it done, he needs to do it on the weekend, they have to have an opportunity to do so.
Right, but it still gives them nine to five and nine to four.
We do it the Friday part.
But I'm, I'm just making that general.
Right, we have to do it, but we have to allow that, of course.
Cocktail hour.
Yeah, but the, there was, there was talk that we would say nothing.
It's cocktail hour, five o'clock somewhere.
There was talk that there was uh nothing on Sundays and then, you know, people raised a legitimate point that Sundays are a day that some people can do it, but you know.
Right. Right. June to September.
To do it in the morning.
This is June to September, right, March.
Or till one o'clock or two o'clock, whatever we decide.
Yeah, this one.
Right. But I mean, this is, so when, when is this? This is September through May?
Oh, by the way, that email we got from that lady also, I think made a good point. Well, then maybe not the lady, the one we got today, earlier today about the, maybe start Memorial Day.
Can't.
Oh, that was good. Sorry. I've gotten made with the person.
I think you signed it from Zootum.
Nice lady.
Email made a lot of good points.
I think it's removed.
But it was about the uh, the hours, that the time that it starts, Memorial Day?
But I think, I think addressing the hours actually will address a lot of the concerns of the regular residents.
Right.
And I feel like, and I can say that, you know, if the town is experiencing, from what I would understand from Ike, some sort of hardship. Mind you, we have a lot of property maintained, but the town is experiencing hardship, other people will also experience a hardship. And.
On the big lots.
They, they will. And, um, you know, I think we need to maybe think, I think Ivy's question, which is to go back, what are we trying to actually legislate? I think goes down and I, and I think we need the EPA input.
Um, and because of the facts that matter, it's that all we're trying to legislate is noise, we have a noise awareness. Right.
Right.
But are you not allowed to consider the other benefits in addition to the noise? And if we only can legislate the noise, can one consider, and this, I, I don't think.
You guys wanna talk about it?
I think it's a, a, a reasoned question of this, we need to understand what the law allows and doesn't allow.
Right, and we can have an executive session, we can have a full and frank discussion, then we can certainly be prepared to give a larger answer, so the public is informed of it as well.
Right, we can have.
I don't want to have that discussion initially with my client.
Yeah, because I was gonna say, we can have an executive session, but the public needs to understand what the issues are and what we can and can't do,
Absolutely.
and where our hands are tied and where there aren't, otherwise it's just not a fulsome discussion.
No, no, absolutely, but as an attorney, I don't want to give my client the advice first in public.
Right.
I want to have those discussions, we can explain law and serve any questions you may have, and then absolutely, it is an issue that needs to be addressed in public as well. So I, I think we talked about most of the issues, what you want to just adjourn it, well, we're not adjourning anything, we're just.
But I haven't.
Just a more session.
We just move on to the next subject. Yes, Roger, you would.
And I'm eager to hear what the SAB has to say and what their.
So we have to talk about an executive session, we have to hear what SAB has to say, and.
It's October the thirteenth.
We have a next public hearing.
Yes.
August thirteenth, right.
Yeah, August thirteenth. Public hearing.
We can always decide to adjourn it.
But what do we have in public hearing law?
Right.
Continuation, yeah, continuation closes.
Yes.
Right, because you don't have a revised local law yet, so I.
Yeah, but we need a new local law. I think we adjourn the public session.
So why don't you.
I think it's costing.
So why don't we just adjourn it? It's fine, we just kept it on the calendar, because we're gonna have to renotice it.
Right. I agree, I agree with you.
But I would, I think what you.
But I think we can have a discussion with SAB.
Yes.
Yes.
Sounds good.
And then come up with a revised law, and that would be the subject of the next public hearing.
But it would have to be renoticed anyways.
Right. Right, right, I'm saying what I think we need to do is adopt a resolution tonight to cancel the August thirteenth meeting, then when you have a local law ready, you would just renotice a public hearing.
So moved, second.
Yes.
Well, favorite?
I. I think it's, I mean, even now, the law, if you're telling me that that is section E two wherever is wrong, you know.
Right.
It's, 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 it's not ready. Well, yeah, and we don't want to hear again on the same exact law, like we, the reason why we need to talk about it is to make changes, so then we can come up with what maybe more of the proposed law is, and that's what can be.
Get some more changes and then to talk about some more, we'll hear some more things, then we'll get some more changes.
Right, okay. Okay, we're ready, on to the next subject.
We still need to come out with what we're gonna.
Okay, wanna go back up to proposed amendments for the parking section, one, two, three, the ten floor?
True.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Take care, goodnight. So proposed amendments to parking section one, two, three, the ten, cool. So basically, Jill, you want me to just put restrictions real quick?
Oh, so good, good, good.
So part, part of the lease with.
Would you have, would you get the local law?
Hala's.
But I'm just waiting for these guys to, there's confusion.
What's going on here?
Do you, do you get the local law? So we're gonna have a little, we can talk about it, we're gonna have it on the.
Okay, so hold on, come on, we'll just go to the next thing and then we'll come back to it.
Yeah, let me see, Ike, you got it.
Okay. Um, okay, so, um.
It's obviously.
Is it in?
It's not, we're not doing it, you know.
We're just setting it down.
There's discussion, let me just think.
We have to change the law, because the parking lot spots are being designated, designated in certain way.
Right.
That's right, because I think there was four nine thirty spots in the other states.
Right.
We've got the map in here.
We have to set a public hearing for the legislative changes.
So that's just about the.
Yeah, that was back in the lease.
But ba- basically, we're talking about ten dedicated spots for mobiles from six in the morning till five o'clock at night. Across the width is gonna be four fifteen minute spots. After five o'clock, anybody who has pickups, because we got some emails about things backing up, anybody who has pickups are, are welcome to use those mobiles spots for pickups.
Yep.
It's, it's only till five o'clock, and uh, and that's pretty much it, and it's part of their lease.
And we have to get enforcement back in there.
Well, you have to.
Yeah.
Well, as soon as we pass it, we'll put the signs up, we'll be good to go.
Absolutely, enforcement. Not just sign, there's no one, sign, squat, glue someone there to move them and.
Right, so.
Somebody there. Yeah. Because what happens is people just like hover, hang out, hang out right here and just, you know, right, they just sit there.
I know, they just sit.
So then nobody can actually get out of the spots.
But I think it's a good point that these, these ten spots will help to accommodate them.
What we need to also do definitely, what we ought to need to do is examine the whole train station. I know nobody wants to talk about Lower King being two-way, but Washington Avenue should be two-way in and out, Lower King should, we should consider doing two-way.
Yes.
I think Washington, absolutely should be two-way.
The fact we have fourteen hundred spot parking lot, not to mention people, just picking up people, and we have one exit is bizarre. And if you ask any traffic consultant out there, when they can recommend one exit for a fourteen hundred parking lot, where everybody pretty much enters within two or three hours.
Well, really, there's two. There's one exit.
There's two exits.
There's, there's one exit.
There's Washington Avenue.
Oh, yeah, there's two exits, but they both, yeah, that's true, but they both, they both fall to the same.
They go to the same spot, and they got Golden Bridge and go left.
They fall to the same spot, right. I mean, it's crazy, it just doesn't make sense. What you hear, how we do that real quick.
Yeah, I go, I go light of the right, right, too, now.
Yeah, but you still have to get to the.
But you're still just getting out of the lot, I mean, sometimes it could be, that someone said today, I mean, twenty minutes to get out of the darn lot.
You're still, you're still to get to that stop sign.
And Washington Avenue gets backed up too, because Greeley's back to.
Yeah.
No, completely. Okay, um.
Doesn't know where the cars make their left.
Yeah, we need enforcement.
Of course, there is a way you can actually make a right, go through the street and come up on one's intention.
No, I know, but the point, you can't get to that point, it's Washington Avenue.
Yes.
That's insane, don't say that.
Actually, not a no true street.
No, it's a no true, it's a no true, that's why it's a no true street.
No, it didn't say that.
Smith Street?
No, we're not talking about Smith Street.
No, I'm talking about Smith Street, that's a danger, you couldn't do that, even if you wanted to, it's a danger there, so.
Talking about making a right on Washington Avenue.
Oh, on Washington Avenue, uh, but then you come up with that street, you can see the uh, blue and white fence.
That's unpleasant, Bill.
Yeah.
The red, white and blue fence.
Clever, okay.
Um, okay, well, we'll see, but then we'll go along.
All right, we'll, we'll wait to get that. Um, so we've talked about this next one before, we're talking out of the Sawmill Sewer District and we, um, we.
I agree.
So I have a lot of questions about this.
Sure.
Um, as the vice president of the Greeley Hills Neighborhood Association, but I, I'm actually thinking, um, I should table those, and perhaps we should have a separate conversation for these affected neighborhoods.
Sure.
Absolutely, certainly. We had a separate conversation.
So there's, there's two, there's two neighborhoods, um, that would be, that. That we'd be sending the letter, that we would be sending a letter to allowing them to opt out of the Sawmill Sewer District.
Are impacted. Yes. 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 Yes.
And, um, one of them is almost all the houses in my neighborhood. Um, and so, you know, I need to make a recommendation to my neighborhood about whether or not to do this. And so I have some questions about, you know, sort of what does this mean for us if we opt out?
I think when you opt out, you can't get back in.
And. Yes, and so, but what, but what are the, um.
There's a, you're two conversations.
We don't need to have a separate conversation, we can have it here now if you want to, but I happen to be my neighborhood vice president. The other neighborhood does not sit on the town board, so I'm thinking we should give those residents an opportunity to sit down with town hall staff to understand this better, is my point.
Sure.
Oh, yeah. But they can always do that.
Um.
No, but if they get this letter. But I think that they should. It kind of encourages them to opt out when it may be a decision they don't.
Yes. Yes.
The three hundred dollar security blanket to be in a sewer district and, or whatever it is, it may be worth it to them, you know?
Mm-hmm.
No, 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 they said it is.
Well, you can. I, you can, you can organize.
Right. Because new subjects are unfortunate.
Public, public organized for my neighborhood, for sure, so.
No, you can organize it as, as it sounds, or maybe.
It's a public meeting.
A public meeting could invite neighborhoods that would be affected.
Sure.
That's a good idea.
I do, just like we do with the streetscape, we had meetings with the Smith Street, the residents, with people that are affected.
Right. Okay, yeah, that's great.
Okay, great. Um, Minkel.
We weren't supposed to do anything on that tonight.
Well, I want some permission to send out the letter, so, uh, it's fine, it's a town board decision, we can send that in any point in time.
But the letter is just a letter, it's just a letter, why not?
But the letter asks you to please return the self-adjusted envelope with your thing, giving permission for us to incorporate you into a petition
Right.
to submit to the county to opt out.
So. So why don't we say, because it is, it is confusing, Jill?
Oh.
Yep.
It is, uh, it is a little confusing, and there are people do need to understand the implications of this. So why don't we just add to the letter that will hold a, you know, session at town hall to answer any questions.
Now, Ivy, maybe what you can do is have them answer the questions like a Q and A sheet, you know, frequently asked questions about this.
At a certain time.
Yeah.
And we can probably answer them, because the real risk from a homeowner's perspective is not being able to get back into the sewer district.
Yeah.
Right, and I need to tell you that.
But, but, I, I think you have such a meeting, I'll tell you why.
There's also, there's sort of a, um, there's sort of a neighborhood base.
To put the Q and A, if we forget something or anything like that, that can be a problem, I think we should just say we're gonna have a meeting and what comes up, comes up.
Yeah, yeah, you should still have the meeting.
I think, I think Lisa.
The issue is that.
I think Lisa's suggestion is great.
Or email the questions too.
Well, we mail this letter, the meetings should be scheduled, and the meeting should be in there,
Yeah.
that if you have any questions, the meeting is currently scheduled for this date, at this time, at this location, and I think that's a great idea, do it in there.
Right. Right. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's just, there is like a neighborhood base component to it, right?
Put it in our calendar. Sure.
You kind of want to act as a neighborhood on this.
Yeah, you.
Yeah, or you may or may not.
But.
You, you really don't.
You don't, you don't have to, but.
You don't have to, there'd be quite a few people that.
You don't have to.
Well, but, okay, but so, part of what I think my neighborhood would be interested in understanding is what are our alternatives? And if we as a neighborhood wanted to connect to the town hall, how would we do that?
Okay.
Right, that leaves a people, you lose contributors. I do lose contributors.
So with all those people, we lose contributors.
It's, it's, right.
My power in doing this is to have sixty houses with me, not to do it by myself.
Right.
Well, right, right, so, so just so that you know, the county, the county has identified these areas
Depended on the connection. I think that would have been.
as areas that, that they believe will be the last if ever areas to connect.
So instead of a hundred years, over two or four years.
They.
So this is what it's, we want to do this now, by late, you know, it runs right up to.
Right.
Yes.
So I, I think it's a great idea, we'll just pick, pick a date.
Yes.
Right, I think you have a meeting for anybody who has questions, not just a particular neighborhood, to come and.
True, yes, I would do, yes.
Anybody who's, the letter goes out.
Well.
Well, yeah, but it's, it, right, so.
See, it's a targeted list.
Anybody, it goes out.
But then your neighborhood association, Ike, you would say, we'll send an email, make sure everybody got this letter, and then we're gonna have a special meeting.
Well, no, that's what I mean. Only. Or good.
Right, okay, next one is the Minkel Dam, so, uh, we, uh, okay. Okay, just very briefly, I just want to give the board an update, just that we are waiting on the hydrology report, that'll be in in October. Um, there, um, I am gonna be asking the board for authorization to solicit bids for a standby contractor. Um, in the event that we may want to lower the water level behind the Minkel Dam, we were looking for a contractor that could siphon some water out to take the pressure off it while we're building.
Siphon the water.
They would just truck it off on, off site.
Well, that wouldn't be hard, because the fire department can do it.
I don't think that they would do it with that insurance.
They had insurance.
They would do insurance, not for that.
Siphon water?
Not, siphon water.
Yes.
Well, we don't.
Really?
I, I don't care, I'm, I'm happy to look into it, yeah.
They should have, they should have. I mean, for what would you do so?
Yeah, they do.
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine, I, I just, I, it's one of us to do.
Jason, can the fire department siphon water out of the Minkel Dam?
They have to.
Did it right side, I'm sorry, I'm doing it.
I don't, I'm, I'm sure they do, yeah.
They, they siphon, they siphon water.
Do they have the capability of the.
To, to run fires, to, uh, to run fires.
No, they have to do it anyways, but any place where there's no hydrants, what do you think they do? They siphon water.
Yeah, I'm sure the capability of the.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's what they do.
And do they have the capability of the.
All right, well, there we go.
Absolutely. Yeah, but where would you put it? That's a good question.
Truck it away and pay to have it, it's, it's.
We'd have to, truck, yeah, we'd have to take a look and see where it goes, but yeah.
Kenny? Um.
Anyone want a pawn?
Um.
Right there in the middle.
What, what purpose is that?
The every street, the every street.
What, the freshman, just, what, what item was that donated to the town, how long ago?
It was in, in, it was taken in in Ram, I want to say twenty-something years ago.
Man, so many really made a big gap.
Yeah.
I think it's also, but it's a really, you'd be surprised how heavily that park is used, and it has fabulous chanterels.
So let's give it to the state.
Oh, really?
Yes, really.
I don't.
Start picking mushrooms and eating them, unless you know what you're picking.
Ole-odious.
She can, I'm even the general, unless you know what you're picking.
Let's, let's bank through this, because Bray is here, we don't want to keep waiting.
Okay, yeah, next, yeah, next is, uh, uh, authorization to attend a police conference.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, next is the, uh, streetscape furniture, let's just turn to that for two seconds. So the streetscape committee has given us recommendations, um, it's on, uh, state contract, let's just see which page we have.
It's page forty-four, forty-three, forty-two, forty-one.
Here we are, okay.
Yep.
And our recommendation at this point would be, um, to, uh, order, uh, six tables with four umbrellas. The umbrella, uh, tables would be, um, at One South Greeley, the other two would be at the end of Lower King. Um, we were interested in ordering, uh, four chairs for each table, uh, four, two side. Um, we talked about the four umbrellas, but Lauren, do me a favor, would you just go get me the, the correspondence that right up on my thing?
The, my question is, right, my question is, is, is this the whole streetscape, did we all agree that this is the way to go?
Eight.
I was eight umbrellas with two. No, no, that's what this is, but I, I'd like to, I'd like to start with less, and.
So they want more. Exactly.
All right, can you do me a favor, have these guys actually gotten some of these for two tables with umbrellas?
They want more. We want to.
No, so the, the, we're not going to get samples of it, it, this is the dark green umbrella that we're looking at.
No, no, it's one table with umbrellas by Great Stuff.
No, she said two.
Two of Lower King, get four by Great Stuff.
It's fine. Uh, the only reason I say this is that it, no matter what, it has to be weighted with the umbrellas.
Um.
She said four, it's cool.
No.
Right, it, it is akin to, it's a different style, but it's the, the same oak as what's in Marion Place, the very heavy metal chairs they have.
Four umbrellas.
I should, right, yeah. We know, I agree.
Okay. Right.
So my question, this is, this, the entire streetscape wants, this is what they want, and this is the number they want?
Oh, they, they actually would like more, we're, we're starting with less to make sure everybody loves what we've gotten and that we can move it.
They want more.
That was good to me, too.
It was our hope that the, the plaza at One South Greeley was gonna be a bit of an advanced space, that we'd be able to do things there. So although, um, WSP and we've had other people come in and, and, um, recommend eight to ten tables there, once we have them there, you can't do a whole lot else with the, the plaza. So I would rather just start with four of them, they're, they're hard to move.
Mm-hmm.
I think they'd very good be.
Mm-hmm.
Eight to ten is a lot, I agree, but honestly, I don't know anybody who's gonna sit at the end of Lower King in that little plaza we put there. I would consider putting one table there and see if anyone actually uses it, and add an umbrella, another one to where Great Stuff is. That's where you're gonna get people congregating more.
Not a bad idea.
I, I'm, I'm happy to throw in another umbrella, it's not really an issue.
I mean, nobody's. No, we're, we're, oncoming traffic is going directly toward them.
Is there, is there a ballad there, or, or, there was a ballad, there, there was a ballad.
Yes, yes, yes.
It, it's, okay, I'm sorry.
I would consider putting one table there and see if anybody uses it.
Well, no one sat there before, because it was, it was disgusting.
Well, it's disgusting.
Gross.
Well, gross, I mean, it's really, we're, we're nice now.
But we can always.
Well, over the course of the next year, nobody's gonna sit sitting there, because they're doing the work on the Confer Building across the way, I mean, it's gonna be a construction boom.
Well, we can start with one, they'll have a fire.
And and just, I just said, it's just a chance.
I would put one there even without a, I mean, there is an overhang, I think, of trees, so I would
How can you, how can you do the fire umbrellas? Yeah.
even not do the umbrella there and put those all Great Stuff.
It is shooting.
Well, we were doing the umbrellas, so the four, so the four, the four umbrella tables were going in front of Great Stuff.
There are two.
Yeah.
Okay.
The two plain were going down, so it's fine, then just make it five, that's fine, start with that.
Okay, that's what we said. Okay.
No, no, we want to make it.
And we can.
No, 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 we want all of them, I'm sorry, you had said two umbrellas at Great Stuff and two.
No, 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 no.
Five, five by Great Stuff, but I told about eliminating one, but I'm not putting one by Great Stuff.
Yeah, no, 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 no.
May I just ask about the umbrellas?
Hold on, let's let's, before we get to the umbrellas, let's figure out the number.
Okay.
Six ta, six tables.
Right, five, one.
We were getting six tables, two of them were going to be down at Lower King, they were not going to have umbrellas. Four tables were going to be at Great Stuff, they all have umbrellas.
Mm-hmm.
Now we're going to up the number of umbrellas to five, I'm going to move, it's going to be five umbrellaed tables in front of Great Stuff.
Imagine two or five, that's fine, do all five umbrella tables, all by Great Stuff, and one that had a, by Lower King.
That's what you're suggesting.
That's a lot of umbrella at Lower King.
No, no, I'm sorry, what you had said was put two umbrella tables, you just misspoke.
Sorry.
You said two umbrella tables at Great Stuff and two down at the Lower King.
No, no, okay, so then then when I got, okay.
That's it.
That's what I said, we shouldn't do that.
Four, four at Great Stuff with umbrellas.
Yeah.
Two Lower King, no umbrellas, because it's sort of shady down there.
That was your original proposal.
I actually think.
Composition, composition.
Okay, I would maybe just take one from down and move it up there, but I don't think we need five umbrellas, that's a lot.
One, right, two.
But but what I will tell you is.
It's a lot of umbrellas. So, cause they take up a lot of space.
The umbrellas take up a lot of space, but as a visual cue of a place where you can go and sit down and relax, people will see the umbrellas.
Yeah, I think we do five.
If if it turns out that you don't want to put up all five, we can, we can keep one as a spare.
No, that's a good point.
Okay.
Five, five tables and umbrellas, though, is asymmetrical, is that gonna look?
Asymmetrical is beautiful.
No, no, five is good, you don't want.
I mean, if you want asymmetrical.
You want asymmetrical, you don't want five, five is right.
So, my other question, my other question is just right.
So let's do five with umbrellas and one without umbrellas.
Sorry, sorry, I didn't like to question the two of you.
Okay, and and we're good, but we're to um.
It's beautiful.
Your eye naturally sees.
Four chairs at each table, two on two sides.
When it's six. Yeah, but when it's six, it wants everything patterned up, but when it's five, it's.
Okay.
Lauren, did you wanna say, I know you're.
Um, wait.
Wait, wait a second, before we.
Why need an arm table at a round, an armchair at a round table? Why would you ask that?
Aren't they all armchairs?
Usually you just put them at the ends.
I was just gonna do it, because some people have a hard time getting up from.
Old people.
Right, Lauren, would you, did you wanna say something, I'm sorry.
Well.
Really?
Yes, really.
You two, oh, excuse me, excuse me, I can sit here.
She's under.
Excuse me, I'm considering, you don't have to be aged as a.
Come on, let's, come on, keep it, Lauren, go ahead.
Okay, um, thank you so much for reading, um, so as far as the tables for the plaza in front of Great Stuff,
Yes.
Waiting issue.
there is about three thousand square feet right there, so five will definitely do for a start. Um, the umbrellas, we have enough space, I measured it out with Adam on um on Lower King. Um, there's certainly actually more room for tables down there. And my hope with Lower King is, because it's about five hundred square feet down there, um, my hope is that folks who purchase food from Chappalwell Village Market and the the merchants down there, they would love an outdoor seating area, and and to Lisa's point, it is shaded, so the umbrellas are unnecessary on Lower King. And as far as the armchairs, though, um, yes, I, if if the vendor highly recommended um a mix of armchairs and armless chairs because it will help folks who have trouble um getting up from their seat.
Yeah. And and I actually think you should have three tables, it should be in odd numbers, because it gives you some flexibility. If you have even number of tables, everybody wants them to be in a pattern, but if you have an odd number of tables.
Yeah, you always want odd number.
Odd number, so I think you should have three down at Lower King and five up, that's eight seating, that seats thirty-two, that'll be a nice number.
Here's my, a couple of questions. Number one, if you guys, I I assume everyone is in agreement, this is the way to go?
Yeah.
Have you thought about tables in the alleyway by villarinas?
He needs a connection.
Oh, we were unable to do that because Bob's Yoli is a, it's um, it's for safety and.
That's.
Oh, villarina.
That's a fire exit.
It's a fire exit.
Is a fire exit.
And a fire.
I thought, I thought you talked about uh King Street, by the way.
This is.
Yeah, I do too.
You're talking about between the.
No, 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 villarinas is that way, yeah, yeah.
Sure.
It's a Starbucks, I thought that's what you talked about.
No, 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 that would be out, that that's a city.
Are you putting them in the alleyway?
We can put, we can put benches.
That's why I said it wasn't the.
We can put benches along it, because there's probably enough width there.
It's totally enough space.
Yeah, um, that might.
Um, it's wider than twelve feet. I don't think so.
Are you talking about which one, the Chappalwell Framing Alleyway or the Bismillie?
Yes.
Yeah, the special talk to the man.
Yes, Chappalwell Framing is very light.
Yes, you can, you can definitely put um benches there, but you cannot put tables, because Bob Bob's Yoli was, that's a fire.
Yeah, that's a fire, that's right.
What, also, I'm, another thing I'm curious about, and I don't know what, just enough about this material, it's gonna look good in year one, in year two maybe, but then when the birds start doing their thing and the rain starts falling on it, what's the durability, how, when should we expect to replace, replace these umbrellas?
No, it's. Actually, it's.
Well, the umbrella should.
Oh, they bring them in in the winter.
That may be true, of course it will, but but.
Umbrellas by definition wear out. For right this afternoon, and the birds still live for the summer.
Yeah.
Um, here's the material for the metal tables.
Yeah, let's see the material.
Um, right there.
Is it powder coated?
On a powder coated, yes, and um, what's really nice about it, it's um, it's a very reputable company, they're actually, the furniture is at Purchase College.
Yes.
And I walked around Purchase to see, um, it's been there for over ten years.
I've seen their furniture, it looks nice.
Oh, cool.
Um, and so it's, it's really, it's heavy weighted and it's easy to wash off.
That that's the, the season, what about the umbrellas?
But it hasn't been.
Um, the umbrellas too, like it's umbrella fabric.
Are they, are they warranty, are they?
Yeah.
Well, no, no.
I'm not sure about the warranty, but the um, it's umbrella fabric and it's easy to wash.
Yeah, she doesn't get too much contact.
Yeah.
Which color were you thinking?
The dark green.
The I would agree.
Because it's the town, it's.
Right.
Were we able to get the um, I'm sort of surprised by how expensive those are.
That looks.
They, yes, um, I only got the.
It, those are the list price hala, so that's not actually the contract price.
Yeah.
So I have this thing.
Right, and ninety-six inches is what, eight feet?
So sorry, I I had asked Jill to look up the state contract prices on this, they're not getting some of that.
Yeah, sorry. Um.
That is, that's eight feet.
Is it ten percent off?
Yeah, definitely.
Um, Bart got it for me for the bench.
Warren, looking, where did this score, where did this, where did this score, or in comparison to some of the other choices that you looked at, price wise?
Was only able to get me the bench today, um.
Oh, I see.
Oh, price wise, they're probably.
Yeah, so it's thirteen fifty-seven for the bench, versus.
So the other reputable vendor is um Wooder, um, but we don't have a a contract with them, because actually, the reason why we found landscape forms is because our our new um litter receptacles are from landscape forms, and so all this furniture, what's kind of nice about that is that when they chip, we know exactly the color black
Versus fifteen ten.
it will be to match, and um, all, it's all the same color.
I guess what I meant is, you must have thought about other benches, you just had like your top three and the top two, and so was it?
It's really.
Yeah, um, it was top two, it was between um do, for benches, it was between.
In general, I mean, was it, so these were comparable, it wasn't a price issue between one and two?
No, definitely not, no, absolutely not.
And but it needs to be the ones that are available off the state contract, it's the, we need to be able to purchase off the the backdoor contract, because that's gonna be so much.
Yes, so this is the one.
That I, that I recognize.
Right, so the OGS price is thirteen fifty-seven, OGS price is fifteen ten, so it's like they're.
Yeah, yeah. Right.
Alright, yeah, the umbrella price to me, just for what it is, looks kind of steep, like Amazon.
Yeah, no, no, because um they lock into the tables, there's actually a locking mechanism, it's a, it's a metal throat.
Yeah, you have to tie a base.
Um, it it's a metal pole that goes into the throat of the table and it locks on the bottom, so that it doesn't blow waste, you don't end up with a, you know, wind hazard.
Whereas.
Alright, listen, what what is it written to, we have to worry, just curious.
Are you saying, so what this, so you're telling me that the table base is.
Yes, it's rated for ninety miles an hour wind.
It's all right.
If they miss, if they're ninety miles an hour, that's, that's, that's really impressive, like a, like a thing.
Right.
Okay, that's, yeah.
Yes.
Well, I mean, the reason why, to to Jill's point, I'm sorry to interrupt, um, the reason why it is that price is because when you buy an a a table umbrella, you also have to buy a separate base.
I mean. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And so this already accounts for that, yes, yeah, which is really nice.
Has the base for it.
It's more commercial grade.
So the the base of the table's weighted is.
Yeah, and it's locked in.
Okay.
So how many, what did we decide on tables, are we gonna do?
That's better.
Bets me.
Thank you.
I personally think, I don't know where we ended up, five tables by Great Stuff and still two without umbrellas down by Lower King.
I think it should be three tables.
Instead of one down by Lower King.
How many tables do you think it should be, Christina?
My question.
Lauren. Three, she wants three, she thinks three too, I think it should be three, it should always be odd numbers, always.
You want three tables?
It's a.
I'm just seeing.
Well, I I I don't know enough about.
I was gonna say different.
I didn't say three, she said, I said two, she said two.
I said two.
I say three.
At the end of Lower King?
We're an X with no umbrellas.
With no umbrellas.
We're next to this.
For a thousand bucks?
Perhaps we, perhaps we even mill and, I, have we decided on the benches, because I'm really passionate about the benches as well.
Are we really?
I love the benches, they're totally hot.
Thank you. What, are we doing the benches?
No, we're gonna do the benches.
Yes, we're doing that.
Okay, we are definitely doing, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I I I personally think two from Lower King, because I think one may look a little uh.
I don't remember anyone saying the passion of the benches.
I walk into town and my children, I need a place to sit, you know?
It may look like we cheap dad with one, to be honest, very lowly.
With one table?
With one table.
Yeah, I don't think one, one by itself.
Three, three, you can have a bunch of kids sit down, you can have several different groups of people.
Yeah.
One is the oldest number that you ever could see.
I think two.
Let's try two on Lower King, it's not, it's a narrow area.
You know me, I'm cheap, I didn't wanna put the brick papers in the alleyway, I thought there were other ways to save some money, but on this, I gotta be, not a place to cheap out for a thousand bucks.
So we're doing, so we're doing seven tables?
That's a connection, side alleyway, connection.
Sorry.
Yeah.
We can always buy more, I'm saying, it's not a place.
Seven tables.
Yes.
It's by parents, it's a seven of one Chinese.
You can always find a new, another place to put it, and move them around.
We never got one.
And then two arm, two.
Never, not once, not whole life.
On a public donation, to three seconds, I want.
Side tables for each, and then um, so this is twenty chairs.
Never get one.
I just ordered them.
Fourteen, fourteen.
Wait, thirty-five, thirty-five chairs, right, five times, oh no, four times seven, you're right, sir.
Too bad it's not thirty-two chairs, just saying.
What's the plan, what's the plan at night with these, are they getting moved out?
No, no, what we would do is just close them.
But the chairs.
Chairs, what?
Oh, no, 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 chairs, the chairs, they're very heavy, they're like the ones that are on Marion Place, those don't budge.
They just stay.
Okay.
They're they're like fifty, sixty gallons, they're heavy chairs.
You see this guy when it works out?
No, I have not.
We lose at times.
I believe that's true, but I, again, the chairs are harder.
What?
In the event that they need to be stored, they're stackable.
I saw that.
Yeah, we. Only by really strong.
Can I make this point?
Only by, only by.
Can I just make an unrelated comment?
One, you know the alleyway kind of next to Starbucks?
Yes.
That we've now paved and we put the bollard in the front, the connection, the connection, and we put the bollard in front.
Connection.
One of the reasons we wanted to close that was we could actually pick up one to two parking spots in front of that.
Right.
Which now says no park.
Yeah, they're striped, they're not striped.
It's not striped, and there's actually a sign that says no parking, and we thought we could pick up spots there
Yeah.
because nobody's driving in there anymore, or driving out.
No, but they still need it as a fire, isn't it still a fire, I think that, that bollard, that bollard is removable.
It's not actually.
There's a bollard there.
The bollard is removable, and I have to check to see whether or not it's a fire exit or not.
I'm pretty sure it is.
Because it 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 was set up as a.
I don't think a fire truck's fitting through that connection area, it is not wide.
But an ambulance maybe, so I just, I have to, I just have to check there.
Ah.
There's a reason we.
Just look, I don't think.
There's, there's a reason they put the uh brake with a bollard.
It it is actually a drivable, it it's a drivable alley, it it is on a six-inch concrete base, it it was intended to be in.
Right.
Okay, can you just confirm, cause I'm not sure that an ambulance or a, certainly a fire truck.
Yes. Happy to.
There's a reason also they put the uh, the brake with a bollard.
They, the bollard is removable and allow, therefore allowing a emergency access, why is it a table allowed to be in a place like that, because.
I'm sorry, they didn't put the brake with the bollard.
The table isn't.
No, I'm asking if a bollard is allowed to be there.
Because a bollard's removable, it's.
No, it's removable.
Table is removable too.
Yeah, but too heavy, they won't be able to move it down. I mean, these tables are really heavy.
Okay, um, so I still think.
Bollard's a safety.
Good, Jeremy's thinking he needs new pennies.
I really, you should reconsider the one table and put three tables in Lower King Street.
The bollard's a safety issue, when it's not being.
Two, both for a thousand dollars, I think it would make it look like a party.
Would be two.
True. True.
And 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 if if we find that we need a third table.
If people sit there, we will buy a third table, yes, with an umbrella.
We don't have. Right.
Promise.
So, let's, yes, let's talk about um benches for a bit. So we um, we have the bench that's been decided upon, it's a great bench, um, the list price is fifteen ten, um, on state contract, it's uh thirteen hundred fifty-seven dollars. Um, I was recommending twenty of them, we currently have twenty six.
Do we have a map that shows where they sent some.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna see where they're all going and what issues they're, and their lies were having.
And correctly from Lauren, these are replacing the current benches, right?
But these are removable, because it's movable.
Yes.
Yeah, but what, with the bollard going.
So will these fit, the plaques that are currently on a lot of the benches will fit?
No. I just have, I don't have the map, I have the locations of the benches.
Yes.
Yes.
Um, so yes, what what we will do for the memorial benches, the memorial benches are actually the new benches.
Oh, and.
Maybe we should see the exact one.
What are we doing with the old benches?
The old benches, the old benches are, um, they're really in a state of disrepair, they're about twenty-something years old, the non-memorial benches. And they're terribly rusted, they're literally all rusted in most of the um.
So, and what are we doing with the memorial benches?
So that we're just gonna take the plaque.
Yeah, well, unfortunately, that is not a pro our green initiative, if it's salvageable, I gotta get that a look.
I'm happy to put them on, no, 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 we're, I'm going to try to put them on Auctions International, if anyone's interested in them, they can have them, but we have been unable to remove the powder coating from them.
We're gonna try them, Lauren, is it?
And so that we have been unable to reapply paint to them, they look gosh awful, horrible.
No. But can't you send them out to be powder coated?
No, because evidently.
Why not?
They are rusted.
Um, they're hala, there are pictures in there.
Because it's very difficult.
Are they rusted?
Sorry, it's very difficult to take and remove uh the powder coating, they explained it to me, it's sandblasting, and it actually made it be.
Yes.
Yeah, you take it up to a place with sandblasted and powder coated, I don't think it's gonna do that up and down, just my new favorite place, buying things.
Right, but but.
But I think it's pretty expensive, might be better off just getting the new ones.
It is, it is expensive, and what they told me is it will affect the inst, the um structural integrity of the benches, and because they are twenty years old, it is not worth it to do it.
And what are we doing with the memorial benches, we're replacing them with these and putting the plaques on these, and then putting them in the same place.
Yes. Yes.
Now we're replacing the planters too, those are up for grabs?
Un, unless, un. Yeah. Unless um, there's a, an issue with placement due to ADA compliance.
They're not up for free.
What?
We're gonna use it, we're gonna use it.
Right, they're.
Need a book?
Probably in the same place, so it's very nice.
Yeah.
So, have we made sure that Bob's Yoli's questions about ADA compliance have been addressed, all of the locations of these benches, so the twenty that you're recommending will all.
Yes. Yes. Right, which is why I just wanna start with the twenty, because those I'm confident that were second choice.
I'm sure.
Okay.
Okay, so twenty benches, and we're getting uh, seven tables.
Eight tables.
Sort of exciting that we're ordering all this stuff.
Oh, it's exciting, the end is in sight.
We will.
It is exciting.
Right at the end.
Come on. Just open up that, open up that wallet and continue to pay.
It's stuff, we always needed this stuff.
Well, I was thinking, the the end is in sight.
We always needed this stuff, but it got cut from the contract initially, so now we're paying for it.
It got cut because we have to make cuts, because we came in a lot higher than we thought.
We continue to.
Okay.
That's for sure.
So now, now we beg.
We knew they were gonna have it, I need to park them a little.
Oh, you're kidding, let's go up to the trail agreement.
Okay, let's keep going.
Alright. Authorization too, you want to talk about the trail?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay, um, so the town has been approached by the New York New Jersey Trail Conference, which is like the preeminent organization in the region for maintenance and marking of uh trails, hiking trails. Um, and they maintain the Appalachian Trail and and many, many other sort of regional destination trails. And they approached the town about um becoming a partner with the town, uh to be able to do maintenance of the town park, the trails. So, um, you know, whip the well and get me, and basically what they'll do is they'll.
Coolest thing ever.
Go with Trailway?
Coolest thing ever.
Basically what they'll do is they will clear, you know, clear the path, and they have folks who are licensed to and trained in how to
Ever?
um, sort of remove trees and debris, and they will also, um, you know, hang all of the um sort of markers, so that you have your 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 trail markers, and they're all up to date and you'll get lost and and all of that, so it's um, it's really, really fabulous, and they have an agreement like this with uh York Town already. Um, and we gave York Town a call, and it's apparently been working really well for them, and I just think it's, I think it's fabulous, so I think it's a real um, recognition of the fact that the sort of trails in our community are really top-notch, and and should be kind of a destination for folks who enjoy hiking and outdoor activities in our, in our area.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they maintain their.
So what are the, what are the.
I'm I'm super sorry.
Yeah, they maintain their own insurance.
Yeah, no, they're, they're absolutely.
Yeah, so what are the costs to the town, like I saw the town would need to approve, for instance, if, you know, markers were all of that, if we, I s, I read it, but
It's section four, yep. Yep.
if we, if we, you know, approve this, we would have to pay for all the equipment, everything else, so I wanna just understand what the potential costs are for the town in terms of money.
Joey, had, has I given any indication what those costs would be?
No.
And again, it's all our just question as to.
So there's, they bring their, they bring their own equipment to do trail maintenance, um, they would be asking for us to supply the plastic
Right.
trail markers.
Lakers.
Well, I don't know, it says equipment in here, I'm pretty sure.
I think it, I think they brought their own equipment too, I did actually take a look for what it would cost us, and I thought we would even have to pay a membership fee, but I didn't even see that. The only thing we have to do is have insurance, and basically cover their volunteers.
Well, we would have to supply the materials for bridges, boardwalks, uh.
Right, of course.
Chantilly's kiosks, signs and semblagers, so if they're taking rebuilding the bridge roads, then we need to supply the equipment, but nothing more than we would have to do ourselves if you.
And we would have to approve it anyway, so, for example, you know, the um, I've been talking for a while about the fact that the boardwalk in um Glazier Preserve
Right, yes.
um, I think stopped short of where it should go, right, I think it should continue on for like another twenty feet.
There is so much harmony.
Do that, maybe.
I know, and I have sent the citations to you more, but so so anyway, so I think it should continue for another twenty feet, right, so I guess the point is that if if
Really?
they said, if they were to recommend that to us, that we, the town, would be responsible then for paying the cost of the boardwalk, but we would have to sign off on that, exactly.
If we decided we wanted to spend money for that.
Right, they can't incur any expense on your behalf unless you approve it.
Okay, and are there, I didn't see anything in here about any fees we have to pay to them to do this, I just wanna confirm.
Free.
Correct, no cost to the town, other than what we've mentioned at the pocket office, the materials.
And for them, it's fabulous, they'll include us in their, you know, walkable Westchester book that they produce every year, which a lot of people might not include it.
Yeah.
How couple of them, who make that up all the time, so it'd be great.
Good.
So just out of curiosity, if we decided we were doing a chapline, which could be a trail, would they be able to do that for us too?
They may maintain, help us maintain it, but I would think they would help us.
Wait, wait, a chapline and a hiking trail, two very different things.
Yeah. You guys are envisioning.
It doesn't necessarily say hiking trails, all the, I mean, certainly a lot of the trails in our parks are walking trails, they're not really hiking trails.
Well. Hey, great, let me ask you a question.
There are a lot of areas, like in Cleeser and.
Speaking of the chapline, when was the first time it was raised as an idea?
So they're not a fly, or a car, where they're more walk, they're kind of flat.
Oh, no, they may be flat.
Did you hear that?
They're usually.
Nineteen fifty, there was a plan.
Flat.
For the chapline, nineteen fifty.
Plan is underway, and there was a, no, it was actually a road, uh that was going to connect North Greeley Avenue with Roaring Brook, the bottom of Roaring Brook Road,
Yeah.
Wow.
where you have the chapline outlined now. There's also the bridge across Roaring Brook Road that would be up above the Parkway and the Road.
Yeah, we know the property that was donated.
Which one's gonna get built first?
Yeah.
It was a big plan.
Nineteen fifty.
Yep.
Probably cheaper to build back then.
Yeah. Not, no, nineteen fifty dollars.
And are they designating which areas they're looking at? I didn't see that either on here.
Yeah, it's one point two.
So, okay, can be amended. And who's amending it?
Town board would have to amend it. Require a resolution, amend the contract.
Okay.
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 Next.
Okay, uh next is authorization to pris- uh approve prison transport agreements. This is an agreement that we have with the county that uh allows us to give me a person. It was cost. Um, Nick, do you want to explain this resolution authorizing the electronic delivery of proposed local laws to members of local legislative bodies?
I do. This is arcane provision that a local law needs to be on the desk of a legislator for X number of days. Now that we're in the digital age, instead of it being on your desk, typically on your desk means it gets put into your official mailbox. You can also receive it electronically. So by adopting this law, this resolution, you're authorizing uh local laws to be sent sent to you via email, including your packets. And that would satisfy this on the desk criteria. That's cool.
Sounds great.
I think that's better.
Nice. Probably go, go be ready.
Then we should take the next step and get rid of.
You probably, go be ready, hide pack.
Packets. Yeah. Wait, 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 for older people like me, I need the, you know, the touch of the paper.
Well, you could print it.
You're not fooling, you're not fooling anyone.
I know, I'll professional, you are in spreadsheet.
Yeah.
Alright. Have the fun.
Hey.
Uh, ELQ change orders.
Oh. We have, we have an updated cost sheet.
We don't, unfortunately, Raff Dury is on vacation, so I apologize.
Oh, that's fine.
Um, I I will have it to you when he was back.
So you allow to take vacation?
I usually don't let him, but just. We let him slip by this time. He's only taking one week instead of two, so he'll be back next year.
It's a joke.
Okay, okay, okay.
Okay, um, uh, so uh there are five change uh change orders that are here. The first one is for um ADA compliance at eighty one North Greeley Avenue. Um, on North Greeley, when we took in uh uh installed the brand new sidewalk, we uh changed the level of the sidewalk so that the steps had to be realigned so that they were um, uh, they meant to be eight inches in the 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 proper ADA compliance.
I thought we approved this already.
We did, but but we never actually got the change order. So I've talked to the board about all of these, but you've never actually approved them.
Oh, do I, okay.
Alright, so these, so basically.
So finally Leo has gotten these to us. This work was done ages ago. If you see, and then it was, and then number.
Okay. So this and then that, and then we actually approved them.
Hmm?
Yeah, I think we actually. I thought we actually approved them. Yeah, I think we actually approved these two.
Well, I, we didn't actually, we knew it was about five thousand dollars is what I told the board.
Mm-hmm.
But we didn't actually have it. So this came in at four thousand nine hundred ninety seven dollars.
But are all the prices here consistent with the prices that you've expressed to us in the past?
Yes, absolutely, but these are the foremost. The only one that came in a little bit more, there, we um, was pizza station we.
And these are. And these. Right.
I told the board that was going to be about one twenty five, it came in at one thirty eight. I remember it being just extraordinarily expensive, those transactions.
Right. Okay. So, because I think in his last spreadsheet, Raff Dury already would blanket this.
He had, he had generally what they were, not the specific, exactly.
A chomp. Right, he had a chomp in there, okay.
Yeah, we had guestimated what they were going to be because we knew they were coming down the pipe, but we didn't have the actual numbers.
Okay.
Um, the vacuum sewer testing is something that was included in the original um uh contract, is something that had to be done by uh required by the Westchester County Department of Health. Um, so that's the.
And all of our approvals now, water main sewer system, everything Westchester County is in place?
Nope. No?
Nope.
Because they don't have the as-built plans yet. And so we're waiting, so we have, we continue to withhold significant dollars from our contractors, engineering and otherwise, until we get them.
Is there a reason they're giving you that they don't have the as-built plans?
Well, actually, ELQ is the one that's supposed to be creating the as-bills to give to Boswell. So although we're withholding the funds from Boswell because we don't feel that they have been persuasive enough in getting what they need to from ELQ so that we have our approvals.
I mean, it's kind of a big thing not to, yeah.
It's a, it's it's a significant thing and we continue to withhold. Maybe we should hold for.
But I, we may want, I mean, we should talk about an executive session, we're going to permanently withhold these.
Whether we should discuss that in the executive session or.
No, executive session.
That's what I just said.
But you know, in in all fairness, what we really want to do is just get this project finished.
So.
The contract with you.
So I know, that's where we're going.
Um.
Right, and.
Asbills have to be delivered in a timely fashion. Like, I can't believe a contract would allow them to basically cover up and seal a road, not get approvals and have us move forward with sidewalks and, you know, all of the asphalt work and everything like that.
No, so they have, they have drafts. So there 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 have been, it's like they, it it's not that they don't have everything. It's that um, the, for example, uh Westchester County Department of Health requires that uh the as, the narrative on the asbills reflect the current conditions. So the plans that were given say things like, the sanitary sewer will be installed at, instead of saying have been installed at. There are, there are last edits that need to be done. They don't have the final asbills in their hand. And a lot of it is just ministerial changes that have to be made. Some of them have to be tweaked based upon the last uh test testing that was done to the sewer manholes. But whatever it is, the ju, the Department of Health has interim plans. They don't have the final asbills. And because they don't have the finals, they will not give the approval.
Have they reviewed the interim plans and basically said they're okay once they've been updated? Have they given their comments? Do we know what the comments are?
Yes, and has, and have. Yes, they have. Yes, there there are, is my understanding that they are mostly ministerial, but they need to get them and they need to be finished. And we will not get anything from writing from the Department of Health until we're done. However, uh any issues that the Department of Health had with us regarding installation, water, sewer have been resolved. No outstanding objections, other than the fact that they'd like to see the asbills.
So this. Okay, so ELQ under their contract, can we check to find out if if they have some sort of language in there that requires that final drawn
You want to have me.
or submitted to the approving authority within a certain timeframe? Because maybe a legal letter and then a subsequent withholding of cash until those are done might be appropriate.
Right.
The next thing I've got down here is the proposed projector screen for the rigging at uh Chapala Formula Art Center. So we had purchased the screen. It weighs over five hundred pounds and needs to be properly attached to the rigging. Um, in order for us to do that, we needed a rigging engineer to come in, assess the stability of what's there and hang it appropriately. Um, we have, we received three estimates. Um.
And part of the purchase was in connection with the grant?
Yes. The grant paid for the line share.
Right.
We think are very generous and stoner. Um, anyway, so um, just see.
Is there any concern that it can't be hung?
No, it can't be hung.
No, it can. We met with the industry.
And why is, what, why is this one incomplete, whether they failed to provide?
I'm sorry, so, oh, um, they uh they wanted eighteen hundred dollars to give us an estimate.
Oh.
We declined. So uh, we'd like to recommend uh Texas, Texas scene it to come in and do something, to take it, hang it for us.
So it's not the assessment, they will hang it for us?
They will do both. They will take and assess everything that's there. They will take and correct what's there. Um, and uh they'll hang it.
Yeah. Yeah, I actually met with them. I found them very impressive.
They they are remarkably impressive and unfortunately, there are very few people that do this. It's theatrical rigging.
So this is being paid for from a grant, so we're just.
No, no, no.
The screen was paid for.
The screen was paid for.
That's fine, you have to install the screen and make sure it's safe, it's no problem. We have the screen.
And you agree when I can explain this when you're ready?
Uh, sorry. The parking, sorry.
So here's a local law, passing three down. So you may recall that with respect to the um restaurant at the train station, there was discussion of changing some of the parking spaces for the patrons. This local law accomplishes that. There are two changes to, three changes to the local law. One of it, we're changing the word taxi stand to pay station. May not always be a taxi stand, taxi stand.
What? To.
To pay station, which is the uh, yes.
The way the loot machines are.
We we need to indicate wherever spaces are, so it needs to be referenced to a point.
Yep.
So that's what you see in the first mark. The second one is that there are fifteen minute parking spots that are being changed to two hours, so we're eliminating zones.
Uh.
And.
Yeah.
If I can point out, um this wonderful illustration we prepared.
Yes.
It indicates where the ten spaces will be indicated on the north, north side of the first frame.
Um. And the first four opposite are remain fifteen minutes for drop off.
So this local law accomplishes that. In uh going through this and preparing this law, which was a lot more complicated than what we imagined with the number of rings, we realized that we also just need to go through inventory, make sure the code matches what's assigned, which are out there, so we'll do that.
Now, I thought the six P M. was supposed to be five P M.
That's right.
Yeah, the.
Well, right, it is, it is.
Five P M.
Section three on the bottom of page two says, no vehicle which will be parked on Weetage two and hours at nine A M. and five P M. On the following portion of Memorial Circle, both of the ten patron spots for the restaurant.
So what about section two?
Section two, which is the fifteen minute zones, that's, those are um eight A M. to six P M. That's an existing code.
That's. Yeah, we regulate parking from eight to six. So before eight A M., you can park more than fifteen minutes, after six P M., you can park more than fifteen minutes.
And you'll be introducing the local law tonight, scheduling a hearing for August thirteenth, if you have other comments or changes, I'm certainly going to take it.
We had discussed at one point um removing the nine thirty A M. spots.
So interesting, we didn't actually find it.
What happened there?
It's not a. It doesn't, it doesn't require like.
So we can take the signs off?
Let's move the signs.
Yes.
Oh.
Wait a second, but wait, with with this thing.
The part of an exit.
Oh, we even, we even move all those signs, oh, we move all those boxes?
Sorry.
How many of these sides were removed? All of them or was it two of them?
There's four.
I know it was four, was it?
I really don't know.
I knew there was four.
Yeah.
You all were not believers.
I think we should get rid of all of them.
Was the plan to move all of them or two of them?
We should get rid of.
Well, none of them are codes.
We should get rid of four. Have we got to add two in or remove four signs?
Right, right.
Right, we'd have to write it into the code or.
Add in the code.
Yeah.
Or move all four.
Like you said, we can add two in the code or remove four.
I, I know that I.
Oh, okay, there it is.
It's not a journey, it's all voiceable, it's all go.
It's all fucker.
They got sidetracked with other things.
It's true, it's not a force.
I needed insurance just for me to take it.
So have the last item on your workshop session agenda?
Wait, wait, let me, one more thing. This, those first ten spots, those aren't two hour parking, these are, these are parking reserved for bobos. Those first ten spots are supposed to be.
Yep, reserved. A reserve for patrons of the tenants located in the town owned Chapala Station building. That's what it says in the law.
Yeah.
Bottom of page two.
It's not saying bobos specifically.
We're giving them ten spaces.
Yeah. Yes.
Right here.
But we can also take back four at the bottom.
What does it say? The first four are parking, the first ten spaces.
That's the fifteen minute ones. Keep going.
The first ten parking spaces on the north side, the first three in the park is basically a place to reserve for portions of, is located in town, right?
Patrons.
But that's, did we talk about six A M. to five P M.? No, these are meant to be after the commuting hours, to be reserved for the um patrons.
What is this supposed to say? Because I'm confused with it too.
The intent is that the restaurant would have reserved parking spaces for its patrons during the non-rush hour period of time.
I'm sorry, say that again.
The intent is that there will be a, ten parking spaces reserved for the restaurant at the train station for their patrons during the non-commuting hours, nine A M. to six, five P M.
Okay.
And that's in the lease, they agreed to the nine A M.? Yes, yes.
Nine to six, and then after.
Nine to five.
Nine to five.
But then what does it say? No, no patrons should be parked in this reserved spot for period of, okay, so that's fine.
Right.
It's not going to be two hour parking, but a reserve for bobos.
Right.
Yes.
That makes sense.
Because, yeah, because he shouldn't be allowing his employees to be parked in these spots.
But they won't, believe me, just he's not the.
So otherwise they shouldn't be.
He said, yeah, that's employees parked in the next town, he's, he's not wasting those ten spots.
Okay, good.
Park the park up at Chapala Station and take the shuttle.
There you go. So I'm sorry, I didn't mean, were there any other questions? I didn't need to rush it all. I did, actually.
It's definitely okay with the nine A M. right?
Alright, so we're ready.
Motion to adjourn.
We're going, we're going to town, what do you need, and we're going to do our land in the, in the.
Hey.
Do we have to go to the other room? Should I just stay here? Why do you, I have a presentation.
You are televising.
Yeah. Do you have a.
We televising.
Do you have a.
See, it's all over there.
Watching our D versus.
Just settled for the second place, yeah.
Live, right in your life.
And the arraignment's over.
Alright, great.
Is that, did anyone second that second or more than?
Yeah, I seconded.
More in favor?
Did everyone second that?
Yes.